Well, welcome, everyone. So, I know it's a couple of minutes early, but since we're not official here, it's a workshop, why don't we get started? Well, let's see, we have a pre-application review for Menifee Farms. And do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, Chairman, thank you very much. Ryan Fowler, our Senior Planner, has a staff report for you.
So, Ryan Fowler, here to present the pre-application review for number 2016-039. It's a workshop for Menifee Farms. That's a single-family residential subdivision. It consists of 98 lots on 27.3 acres. It's located south of Wickard Road, east of Ascot Way, west of Howard Way, and north of Heim Street. The project description is it's a revision to a county-approved tentative tract map 33511. It increases the number of single-family residential lots from 71 to 98 on 27.3 acres, and it maintains the 7,200 square-foot minimum lot size that was on the county-approved tentative tract map 33511. And this is an image of that tract map, the current proposal. So, the general plan land use for the site is the two-to-five dwelling units per acre residential. To the north, you can see the yellow is also the two-to-five residential. To the south and to the west is rural residential with a one-acre minimum, and to the east is our economic development corridor. On the site is vacant lands. To the north and to the east is vacant land, and then to the south and west is vacant land and single-family residences on large lots. So, what the county approved in 2007 was 71 dwelling units, and this is an image here on the right of that tract map. On 27.3 gross acres, that had, that comes out to 2.6 dwelling units per acre. There were three basins, shown in blue, and there was a footpath along the southerly bank or the southerly top of the dry channel. It's shown in red there. There's a prehistoric interpretation area that was proposed as part of that tract map to relocate cultural resources, and it was on the westerly boundary where you see the red loop. There was also a natural drainage swale that was going to be preserved, as well as a span bridge shown where the green oval is located.
What would that be spanning?
The dry channel, the ephemeral stream. It goes across and it stays out of a conservation, what would have been a conservation easement. It's dry for the dry months, and then, you know, when we get rain, then there's water in it. But it's just kind of intermittent stream is another word for it. There's also was to be some relocated granitic rock outcroppings under this county tract map. So, under the new proposal, we have 98 dwelling units, and this is the same image as the county, just to kind of give you reference on the right side, so you don't think that you're looking at the new proposal. I can bring that up at the end as well, but under the new proposal, there's 98 dwelling units on 27.3 gross acres. That comes out to 3.6 compared to the 2.6 dwelling units per acre. Two basins now. It eliminates the footpath and the prehistoric interpretation area along the dry stream, the red line area, and proposes to underground the storm drain system instead of the above-ground natural drainage swale. And the consequent, or the, one of the, I guess, benefits to undergrounding would be to eliminate the span bridge across the drainage channel.
Which basin are we losing?
So, I can pull up the... So, they just get completely relocated. There was three before, and now you can see there's two. It's the large, let's see my cursor, there's one, and here's the second one. Compared to where they are here.
Thank you.
And I won't walk through each one of, read off each one of these general plan policies, but generally, they're the city's policies that, and this is in your staff report, that discuss the preservation of natural habitat, the preservation of natural resources, of cultural resources, and the rock outcroppings. So, when, if and when this revision to the county-approved tract map does come in as a formal application, applicant will be required to conduct biological and environmental studies to assess the current value of the drainage swale. And those future studies may reveal that the drainage swale is of low biological value or it may not, but we haven't received those to date yet.
Do you say biological value really mean cultural value, or?
We'll also be requesting a cultural resource report, but right now, on that bullet point, I'm just talking about the biological value.
What do you mean by biological? Are you talking flood control, or are you talking about just preserving the tree species? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, the, it covers both. It covers the plant species as well as, you know, bio, animal species or bird species as well. It'll be a comprehensive sort of analysis. And then the cultural resources report will also be required at the time that they come in for a revision, and they'll be required to update the previous report. But this current proposal right now does propose the elimination of that prehistoric interpretation area that was required on the county-approved plans. Staff did receive correspondence from the Pachanga Tribe, and they did request that when they do do those studies, that a tribal monitor accompany the study preparer, and that any development on this property, future development, that they would be designed to avoid or preserve the cultural resources. And currently, based on the plan we've seen, it's unclear where the granitic outcroppings, rock outcroppings would be located within this plan because there doesn't appear to be the same open spaces that could, you know, accommodate those rock outcroppings.
Can we go back to the picture, the current situation, the current approved plan? Are the, yeah.
This is the...
No, not the future.
The approved, sorry.
Approved, sure. Yeah, one more. There you go. So, the current, those rocks with holes in it in the food preparation, all that mentioned in the report, were, they are located at the bottom?
No, no, I'm, that's not where they're located. It was, that was where they were, that's not where they're located now. That's where they would be relocated in this interpretive area, I believe.
Do you know where they are located currently?
I do not.
I'm just curious, why do we preserve rock croppings? What's behind the?
There is a general plan policy here, and I'll read it. General Plan Policy, OSC 3.4, "Support the preservation of natural vegetation and rock outcroppings during and after the construction process." And generally, that's just an aesthetic issue.
Keep everything from getting paved over. So, we still look like we're in the foothills of the desert.
And so, so at this time, staff is seeking the commission's feedback in terms of the proposed changes compatibility with the general plan, as well as staff is requesting that the planning commission consider, not necessarily that it's yes or no on the county-approved plan or yes or no on the proposed plan, but there may be some kind of in-between or some consideration of compromise solutions such as, you know, reincorporating some or portion of the eliminated elements. So, at this time, staff is requesting that we conduct the open-to-the-public workshop and provide feedback to the project applicant.
With regard to this design, can you explain to me how we are gaining 27 residential lots, but the minimum size is not being decreased? Was there open space that there, is it the basin that they're adopting the new space from? Where are they getting the space from?
In this image, can you see that there's the ephemeral stream that runs through the middle of that?
Right, just above the red line?
Exactly. That space is where the water runs through. Now, they're proposing to convey the water through Wickard Road and then down Ascot on the west, and so basically, you're picking up all that land that was the ephemeral stream.
So, they're going to redirect it. Where does it come out?
It still enters and exits at the same points, but it just takes a different course. It goes along the road on Wicker and then down Ascot on the west side of the tract.
Oh, that's why they have to lose that footpath?
Correct.
So, are they, that's a, so all the water, they got a collector there on Wickard that's going to carry it west? Is it going to carry it west on a, in a curb and gutter situation, or is there going to be a drain pipe up there?
You can see where it comes in at this point, and then it travels down Wickard.
That's an underground pipe?
Yes.
Oh, I see, because they mentioned that they're going to go underground sewer instead of the...
What size underground pipe is that?
I can't read it.
Well, water flow in that right angle like that?
Seventy-two. Applicant says it's 72.
When you look at the road there.
So, Commissioner Phillips brings up a point that heading west is going uphill, so are they going to cut in and have it go gravity, it's still going to be gravity feed, I assume, right?
Well, let's hear from the applicant. Maybe this, these are good questions we can direct to the applicant. So, come on down and state your name.
Hello, I know I was jumping out of my seat. I'm like, I think we have the answers. Hello.
Well, we wanted to make sure we had technical questions of staff so we could be more educated in talking to you.
I understand. I'm sitting quietly until I was called.
There you go.
My name's Charlene Kussner. I'm with CM Consulting, and I'm representing the applicant and the owner tonight, which is Granite Investment Group. So, we really just wanted to say thank you to staff for working with us on this redesign, and we're really looking forward to hearing your comments, your feedbacks of your vision for this area for City of Menifee.
And just so we know, what is your role in repres, are you an engineer or are you?
No, I'm the processing entitlement project manager. I also have, our civil engineers are here today, and they can speak about hydrology and water quality, and we also have our environmental, our archaeologist is here as well.
Good, so do you have any preliminary comments you want to make before we pepper you with questions?
No, we're just really excited to be back in front of the commission, and we really want to design a project that works well for everyone and move it along to final map.
Well, let's defer to Commissioner Phillips, because that seems to be the question of the hour, what's going to happen with this water. So, do you want to pose your question to the applicant that they can address directly?
Well, I had several questions, but one of them is you have a blue-lined stream which requires that you're going to be interacting with the feds.
Yes.
As well as with the Riverside Flood Control District. Now, your proposal to run this, it's a conduit, it's a pipe?
Yes.
And you're going to be doing quite a bit of trenching from that entry point into your site, upgrade it, and then slightly downgrade it before you connect with the stream on the southwest side.
I can first address environmental, and then I can turn it over for hydrology to our civil.
Okay, because I had an environmental question too.
Okay, I'll listen to that also.
The water thing just kind of popped out. The, I was out taking, putting some eyeballs on that site, and I noticed that there appears to be a nest of raptors there on the southwest side, in that, of the grove of trees there. And I was wondering whether that's going to be addressed in the biological portion of your ER.
Absolutely.
Okay, and the other one was the structure that I noticed that was right in the grove of trees. Is that where the Indian artifacts are?
I can have our archaeologist address maybe some of the specifics to where cultural resources might or might be.
Okay.
We are going to get a full set of new studies, because these studies were old. I mean, the tentative map was approved in 2006, so we would be getting updated studies. Victor Horschar of VHBC provided a preliminary memo. He went and did a cultural survey, a walk, if you will. Due to the drought conditions that we've had, unfortunately, that area has been degraded. It's not as viable as it once was, just because there's a lack of water, candidly. But any bird species or any, we would do the full set of studies to address any impact to biology there, and that would be with our package, yes.
And my last question is, there appears to be two water wells on that property that you know about?
I believe, I knew of one water well, but I...
Yeah, I saw one, but it looked like, that one concrete structure looked like it was a part of a well. That's some PVC pipe running out of it.
I'm not sure if that's a well or not. I do know we had one well on site, which we would mitigate and cap and take care of before grading, yes.
All right, thank you.
And I just wanted to mention one thing as staff. We did receive a phone call from the Pachanga Tribe, and they would just request that we not discuss the location of the cultural artifacts at this time.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know that.
They're sensitive to that, yes.
I have a question. Since it's a blue line, are you doing mitigation properties somewhere else, mitigation fee?
We've talked to RCA, we had preliminary discussions with RCA and RCRCD, both. You know, it's their opinion that these pockets of habitat are not as useful to the public as bigger habitats like our own habitat here in Menifee or Temescal Canyon. They would much rather have us pay our mitigation fees to actively restore and enhance those areas for public use. So, we have had those discussions, and they have credits available.
And do they, on a side note to that, do they point those to specific mitigation areas that they're already purchasing? Because I know they're grouping them for other projects, you know?
What was, they do prefer to keep them in the location of, you know, they want it to serve the public and the public of Menifee, since we are building in Menifee. So, they each said that they would prefer that credits be directed as close to this area for our public's use.
Okay, and then park, I don't see even a pocket park. Are you just paying mitigation to the city instead of a park?
We had, we had some preliminary discussions with planning about that. Because of the large subdivision that's currently being processed just very close to our project, and they have a very large public park that's being...
Where is that?
It's to the northwest, immediately to the northwest.
Project, who's that?
Meadowwood, I believe. Goes by the name Meadowwood.
Isn't that an industrial site for sale? There's a big sign there that says this is industrial property for sale.
You can see to the northwest, there's some two-to-five dwelling units per acre residential.
Right, and he's planted a whole bunch of wheat out there. He's got a big sign trying to get dirt bikers off of that area because they chew up that whole lot. He's got a sign over there saying that this whole field has been planted with wheat. Please help the farmer make a living by staying off that property. Is this the one you're referring to? Because it's actually west of the site.
Okay. I don't know exactly which property you're referring to, but I can say that, you know, it's north of Wickard Road to the northwest of this project site.
Right, it's the yellow.
Yeah.
Says 2.1 to 5.1, I mean, five residential.
That is a county-approved tract map.
So, the development she's talking about is kitty-cornered to this exactly? In other words, exactly to it?
Yes. And we're not, I mean, we're here for your feedback, and so we're not opposed to offering, you know, a small pocket park if that's, you know, what is...
Yeah, here's the problem we're going to have with that, and I'm sure you've been following the tone of this particular commission, at least since I've been on here for a year and a half or so, that maintaining the open land is kind of paramount now, that all the development's exploding. So, to hinge your land use on another project that's not yours and you have no control over, if they don't do what you expect them to do...
Sure, right.
Then we can't hold you to their standards. So, you got to, if you're going to do this project, if you're going to go first, you're going to have to put parks in. If they're going to go first, then you can say, hey, look at all the parks that are already there. That's kind of where you're going to be stuck in this.
And we are open to that and working with staff on what is acceptable for this size of development, what's the best use. We're open to that.
Well, can I kitty-corner, or whatever, tag on to what you just said? There's a new phase in the city of, instead of having a park in each development, which costs the city a lot of money and is paying mitigation, so we can pay towards a bigger regional park. However, having said, and I've been recently been pushing for that, and I support that, the reality is, though, you've got smaller homes going in here, which means families with little kids, they're, I'll tell you, they're not going to walk across Scott to go to a park. So, what I would suggest to think about is a little pocket park where you move some of these rock outcroppings to in a corner.
Sure.
Fence them off, you know, and then have a little pocket area, but here's the keynote, have that park owned by the HOA, so the city doesn't have to maintain it, but it's small enough that we're not going to kill a lot of your homes, but it's be enough where mom and dad can take their three-year-old to run around for 10 minutes. Maybe, I don't know, quarter-acre park, half-acre, I don't know, whatever, and put the rock croppings in the corner, because you're going to have problems with the commission and just people in general. You're taking away open space and you're taking away what is considered a cultural item, these rocks.
No, and it is our intention to maintain these rock outcroppings as directed by our archaeologists and staff, absolutely, in some fashion on the property protected, but we would not be eliminating them. And again, we're open to an amenity that only serves our community and adds value to the end user, so we are open to that.
Yeah, so I would encourage mitigation fees to the city in your general, Quimby and other park type fees, open up your own HOA, maintain park with the rock outcroppings.
Okay.
That's my suggestion.
Okay.
Go a long way. Can we address the hydrology issue? I think we got sidetracked there for a second.
Yes, this is Manny Gonzalez. He's with TGA Engineering.
So, where's this water going to go?
No, Commissioner Phillips made an excellent observation. Just to clarify, the drainage pattern is in a northeasterly direction and not the opposite. It's in the northeasterly direction. So, the water's actually going to be intercepted at Ascot, conveyed through a 72-inch pipe, and discharged on Warwick at the same discharge point that, same historic discharge point.
Is that backwards? It's conveyed on Ascot and let out on Wickard, or taken in on Wickard and let out on Ascot?
I was making the correction that it's the opposite of what was stated earlier, yes.
Okay, when I looked at that, it appears that the terrain slopes to the southwest and not to the northeast.
Oh, is that what you said? Okay, no, I misunderstood.
Right.
The terrain and the flow pattern in the stream is in a northeasterly direction.
Oh. He's saying the water is going this way.
From Ascot to Warwick Road, yeah.
Okay.
So, I guess maybe I'm not understanding. The flow pattern and the terrain slope northwest, but I'm looking at the pattern of the pipes, and they seem to be going southwest.
No, the flow...
Is the map upside down or something? Because the pipes go this way and then down. You're saying the water's going that way.
The flow, it's intercepted at Ascot with a head wall, wing wall, inlet structure, and once it's intercepted, it's conveyed in Ascot. It travels to the north, and then it heads easterly on Warwick, and then it discharges at the same...
Oh, so this point at the top of the map is an exit point for the water?
That is an access, yeah, exit point, correct.
I see.
Everything drains to Salt Creek.
That's exactly right. That's the ultimate discharge point. That's correct.
Does that answer your question?
In my opinion, it flows to the southwest, and that's because I stood there and walked down that stream, and it, the whole lay of the land in that particular part of the quadrant is sloping decidedly to the southwest. And the other part I had with the pipe that's going upgraded, and then when you come down on Ascot, you're heading down gradient, especially to where the road goes into a steep, like a steep ravine there?
That's exactly right. So, right where the, right where the stream is located on Ascot, you have, yeah, you have a...
It's huge, it's, yeah.
So, as part of, as part of the development, as part of the construction, once we underground the pipe, that the street is, will be leveled on both sides, so that two-to-one slope that goes to the stream will no longer be there.
Okay, and you're still being going, you're going to be going down gradient from Wickard to that stream area? When you take a look at how that land slopes there.
Yeah, no, if you look at the intersection of Ascot, if you look at the intersection of Ascot and Warwick, there is a high point there, and I think that's what you're referring to. There's a high point there. Some of the water flows to the stream to the south, a short portion, but the rest flows to the east to, alongside Warwick, but most of it, the entire pattern is in a northeasterly direction. So, from Ascot to Warwick Road, there's a good fall from one side to the other. But I think what you mean is at the intersection, there is a gentle grade for a short segment that comes to the stream. That is correct.
Okay.
It comes to the stream, and then it goes, goes, travels in a northeasterly direction.
Okay.
He's heard you, but he doesn't believe you. I think that's what we're looking at. So, fortunately, we're in workshop phase here, so...
Yeah, so I'll just, you know, I'll just table all of that.
The value of this workshop is now, when you come back with a plot plan for us, you know this is something that the commission's going to be looking strongly at as to this water flow and these high points, and...
Absolutely.
The staff is now on notice also that that's something that's going to be of a major concern to the commission, so they can deal with that with you. So, obviously, you don't need, you can represent whatever you want now, however it's going to go, but that's something that's going to be looked at in the future. I have a question about this. So, this plot plan is up there now, is that the idea of how it's going to look?
Correct.
So, you've got this racetrack in the center, which we've really tried to vastly get away from. You know, it looks, it looks like that breakout game. You know Atari used to have that game with the block, and you had the paddle on the bottom, and it would just create this pattern. I think you'd probably be better served, and I'd like to hear the other commissioners' input on this, but maybe by staggering this design a little bit, because this, this straight block of houses in the center, it's just, when you get in there, it's going to seem like a trap or a maze.
Military base.
Yeah, it's, it goes against the design we've been encouraging, and I hesitate to use "planning" rather than "design," I should say.
Sure.
A little lazy, frankly. And I think if you were to come back with this, with an actual submission, with this design, I don't know how much approval you'd find from this commission.
Okay.
Do we get input from, am I out on a limb on this one?
No, you're not.
I agree. My only concern is in that small a space, it's kind of hard to do an alternative street design. Maybe the planner can opine on that?
We've got two, we've got two outlets in this larger rectangle here, right? One onto Wickard and one on, what road is that on to the right? Holland? No.
Howard.
Howard, yeah, Holland runs parallel. So, I mean, for the size of the development, I think, I don't have a problem with the two outlets, provided traffic is, traffic engineering is fine with it, but just the, just the striking of the plot plan to me tells me, ah, I need some more work on that.
Yeah, a point duly noted. Also, the length of the street, just to get a perspective, is about 900 feet. I'm not sure if that changes anything, but it's, it's 900 feet, not too long. I'm not sure if that changes anything, but we can throw some cul-de-sacs to break it up a little bit.
If it turns out that this is really the only way to do it, I know it's not a huge plot, I mean, you're not driving for a mile on a straight line, but just the way it strikes seems to go contrary to what we've been asking the developers to do in our new development.
Well, maybe you could break it up with a park, and, because what, three, just to put in perspective, there's three streetlights, maybe?
We were just discussing with the ownership, is, you know, we would love to work with staff on tree wells or meandering the frontage to make it look more cottage-like. This is, you know, not a large site, and as commissioners are aware, we're trying to make something work from a business perspective, as well as make it palatable to the commission staff and the community. So, I think we'd be willing to work with you on breaking it up, maybe with a pocket park, or maybe a couple pocket parks and some tree wells and some different things to break up the street scene.
Farther down the line, more different housing structure types than just two, like maybe five?
Correct. We presented just a typical of what we were, we're working with a partner builder who builds... almost semi-estate home product in the area. But yes, we have up to five elevations and three floor plans that we could call on, so we would definitely want to break that up.
Have you spoken with the other residents in that area?
I've met with one. They are a little bit more challenging to meet because they have gated homes. It's, you know, it's a rural lifestyle which we appreciate.
Right.
And we've had communication with a larger property owner across Howard, the PAC-10 folks, who are doing a kind of a retail, larger commercial development over there. We've also talked about with staff doing dark skies where we try to, you know, we don't want to have a Home Depot or a, you know, development in the middle of a rural neighborhood. We want to make sure that we're conscientious of our neighbors to the south that have bigger lots.
The first thing I noticed was that this was a really, really obnoxious cluster of homes in a residential area. So that's just my opinion.
The, I do appreciate that your design maintains the lot size.
Yes.
I really do appreciate that. And I'm going to tell you now that if you say, Commissioner, we've heard you ask for different designs, we've done that, but in doing that, that requires us to reduce the lot size, it's a 6,000 feet, will you approve that? The answer is going to be no.
Correct, we hear you.
Yeah, so.
The buffer between the rural and the EDC.
We understand.
Yeah, so, you know, it's a shame you have to lose that outcropping through the center, that ephemeral stream, whatever you want to call it. It's a shame, but I get it, it's your property, you want to develop it and we respect that. But you got to kind of meet us halfway.
Well, we understand that. We had, you know, discussions with staff before this about going to a smaller product or lot size and that was decided no. So that, and that was kind of incorporated in the same design. Then we went back to the drawing board, looked at ways that we could increase and part of that was increase our area and part of that was, you know, removing the stream bed.
Yeah, that does, I mean, that does bolster your credibility on this project by maintaining the lot size, I'll give you that.
Okay, thank you.
For fun.
I think one of the problems is we don't have the footprint on here. It might look a little different.
Talking about the house footprint?
The house footprint.
Oh, the actual, yeah.
Yeah, because right now it just looks like a row of boxes.
That brings up a question, appreciate that, Commissioner Madrid. If you could, what is your desired setback on this? Are you going to do a front sitting footprint or a back sitting with a big front yard or what's your product you're looking at on this?
Well, we're, again, this is, we're not 100% partnered with an end developer yet. The owner is developing the site, looking to partner with that end user. But typically, we do a standard setback, we follow city guidelines. We like to have a nice frontage if we can, a side entry garage, just to keep the garage doors to a minimum from the front elevation. And we do like a large back, as much of a backyard as we can, absolutely. We want to give our community the ability to build pools and outdoor living space because that's what, you know, this area especially, you want to take advantage of the weather we have and have that outdoor space available for entertaining.
Just one precaution before you get too far, because you are removing that blue line stream. Checking your hydro modification, because with that comes the sediment transport requirements now. And because you're downstream, natural bottom, your sediment transfer is going to be a big issue, that's a relatively new requirement. So before you go spend too much money.
Exactly, and that's going to be one of the first studies that we look at, absolutely.
And then, you know, I think we could get a little more creative. I think maybe the middle left knuckle could be a double cul-de-sac.
Yeah, we hear you, so yeah, that just, the center block of homes needs to be broken up.
Right. So I think if I can summarize for you, you know, I'll just go in the order we've just heard them. So take a look at the design on that, see if you can break it up in some way. With regard to the parks, I don't think we, because of the size of this plot, I don't think we have a problem with you paying the mitigation fees and piggybacking on nearby parks. However, there does need to be something internally, something internally. And be wary of piggybacking on products that haven't been built yet because you're not going to get that benefit of the doubt. And then this elevation issue with the water will need to be addressed specifically in the plan that comes before staff and the commission, because you can see those are the questions we're going to have. And then the issue of the raptor habitat, I think that Commissioner Phillips brought up, is something, you know, the protection of that or effective preservation of that will be important. Did I miss any? And the rock outcroppings?
Rock outcroppings, yes. Absolutely, yeah, we agree with that.
And I don't have to tell you about the Pachanga tribe's involvement, I think that's something that, if you're going to build around here, that should be number one on your mind all the time.
Yep.
Right, well, and to piggyback on that, they did send that letter that said to avoid and preserve these areas, so even though the county also approved it, be cautious of, I mean, Pachanga and the power that they have, be careful.
All right, any other further comments for the applicant, questions of the applicant? No, anything else you want to bring to our attention based on what we've heard? Nope.
I think we're complete.
Okay, good, 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 good.
Thank you very much for your time, we really do appreciate it.
Yeah, and again, as we always say, thank you for bringing this to us first so we don't have to do this
Right.
and waste your money in an actual hearing on, we can just do the workshop and now you can, we're going to bring it back knowing how we're going to feel about it.
That's very good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are going to be in recess until 7 o'clock for the regular.
Do you want to just double check that nobody else in the audience wants to speak?
Do we have any public speakers on this issue?
I have a question in regards to the buffering I own.
Why don't you come forward, come forward to the microphone and state your name, let us know who you are.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Saden-Wasser, I'm actually the neighboring two-and-a-half acre property to this, so.
How do you spell your last name? Thank you.
We are the, on Heim Road to the, we're the southwest, that two-and-a-half acre is cornering. So that little, that's us.
You're the one that.
The one that's developed, yeah, right.
The left of it?
The bottom of the T, to the left, yeah. So I'm just curious, what is the buffering between this and us? Because it's kind of disturbing for us buying this, knowing that 98 homes are going to be going up next to us. Wasn't really what we had planned on, so what is the buffering between this and me, pretty much?
Well, it wasn't, you know, they haven't submitted a specific building plan on that, that's something that will come up. Obviously, they're going to need to protect privacy rights going in both directions, that's something that's part of the plan and something that will be addressed and it's something that the staff considers in doing the reports. Your concern is absolutely valid.
And also the traffic, is it going to be coming out on Heim, is it going where, what's?
Again, that's going to be something that will depend on the ultimate layout of this property, but you did see, if we could show her that layout that's got the, the one that I don't like, yeah, here. So up at the top, there's, on Warrick, there's an entrance and over to the right edge of the photograph over here on Howard, there's another entrance over there and then there's one straight down at the bottom here. So that would be the exit points that they're proposing, obviously not into your property.
Right.
So that's what it says now, but again, this isn't a final thing. Depending on how the layout works out, it could come out differently.
That brings up a good question. What is the projected on the traffic study, most common travel? Is it south on Howard to Scott or what is it? Where are they going?
People going past this property?
No, no, they're coming out, how do they get into the freeway?
Well, you can go in two different directions, you can go to Warrick or you could go down south along Howard Road because that connects to Scott Road as well. I know shops at Scott was putting in that, is conditioned to put in that road there. They would also be conditioned to put it in if shops at Scott didn't go first. So you'd have both options.
No, not heading your direction.
Okay, besides the 98 people moving in next door to me.
And if you want, you could take some time to talk to these folks right now if you want to, they're, she's just said she's having trouble talking to you folks and here you are.
Hi.
So you're both in the same room, so don't address us, address them and that would probably save you some trouble.
I appreciate your guys' feedback for them as well, so it's been, we'll be getting letters as this goes forward as well, correct? Like we got this one?
Notices, yes.
Notices, yes, perfect, all right, thank you.
Do we have any other speakers on this?
Oh, go ahead, Bernie. I was thinking as a historian, because I am a historian in Menifee, Betty Boris. I live on Zider's Road in Menifee. There came a time years back when a property owner built a huge dam up south of Scott Road, kind of up there where that little church is. Became a very wet year and that dam broke and that water came cascading down northeast, across Garbani, across this property, went on up to Han and wiped out our farms down there with all the water that came through. I just want to suggest that yes, that water does run northeast from that property historically.
Thank you.
Betty, can I ask you a question as, I think you're on the Historical Society.
Yes, yes, I am, I'm treasurer.
Thoughts on these rock outcroppings that have the Indian?
We definitely, our group supports preserving the rock outcroppings, the scenic corridor and not building on the tops of the mountains and hills in Menifee. And I do believe that this group does support that also and we do appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for that perspective, Ms. Boris. Any other speakers specific to this workshop item?
Hello, Ms. Miller. And if there are pictographs in the area, then I hope you don't move the rocks, that you leave the rocks there. And why don't you just leave the property there and design a way for children to not impactingly go back to visit the rocks and the history. They certainly need to know that. I mean, I just thought that was amazing that there was a dam here and it rechanneled the water somewhat and you study how much of a floodplain this is. And there are hills and the water runs down, collects and collects on Newport Road. And it will if we have a rain here. But what you're doing to Menifee and what the county is doing and Elsinore is assuring there's no going to be a rain. Missed it all last year, all you're making is heat from the pavement. We're sick of it. Wasn't 111 degrees enough for you to stop anything and declare this place a bloody fire hazard? Any more houses are a fire hazard here. We who have lived here for 30 years cannot stand any more buildings. Can't believe people with historical backgrounds to the area would support more houses here? It's disgusting to us. You cannot afford any more houses because every time you do, you have to buy more police and more fire protection. You can't afford it, you never get ahead. All of these cities are crying, oh, we're going bankrupt, the city of Riverside, the county of Riverside. And all they seek to do is sell off more of it. You know, and one lawsuit, I'll put you back in time, I'll put you back in lawyers to pay. You can't afford more of this, take care of what we have. You want to complain about the off-roaders doing things to the environment? Well, it's just going to be more of this and the people that come here, they don't take care of Menifee. They thrash it, they get in those awful fossil fuel vehicles and ride all over the habitat. So I am praying that you take better care of Menifee. The Menifee we knew, how many of you have lived here for over 10 and 20 and 30 years on the staff? Because the Brown Act doesn't allow you to say so, you don't have to. But at least one of you there asked the right questions. And then one of you complained about the laziness because these developers are, they have so many projects, they don't care. And they tell you what to do. It's time you stood up and said, we don't want you anymore, think of another job. Where is our mass transit? If you think we can get around here on RTA, you're out of your minds, it's ours. Where is our community shuttle? You should have one encircling every shopping center here so we can get around and appreciate what's already here. And the rest of you go back to Orange County if that's what you're trying to fill here.
Fair enough. Any other speakers? No? All right, well then we'll bring this workshop to a close and we'll stand in recess until 7:00 PM. It is 7:00 PM, why don't we call this meeting to order? Let's take a roll call.
Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Here.
And Chair Carwin.
Here. Why don't we stand for the flag salute, Commissioner Thomas, why don't you lead us?
Sure. Hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so do we have any modifications to our agenda?
No, sir.
Any presentations this evening?
No, sir.
Do we have any public speakers of general concern?
No, sir.
All right. So that brings us to item number seven, approval of the meeting minutes. Commissioner Doty was absent last time, does anybody have any comments or motions on the minutes from the previous meeting, June 8th?
No, I make a motion to approve as they are stating.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, the minutes are approved, which brings us to number, item number eight on the consent, which is the consent calendar, one item regarding an extension of time on number 2015-200. Does anybody have a request to pull this item or shall we just vote on it as it stands?
I move that we vote on it as it stands.
A second.
All right, so we can do a, can we just do a voice vote or do we need to take a roll call on this?
Roll call, please.
Okay, let's take a roll call.
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
And Chair Carwin.
Yes.
I have a technical question, sorry for yawning. There's a thing in there that calls it a linear park, is that a long skinny park?
Yes, essentially.
Okay, just checking.
Steaming right along, we are now up to the public hearing, section 9.1, public hearing for our planning case number 2016-073. Do we have a staff report? I see juggling of staff chairs.
Yes, Chairman Tamara Harrison, our associate planner, has her presentation for the commission.
Ms. Harrison, good evening.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners Tamara Harrison presenting for staff. Agenda item 9.1 is substantial conformance number 2016-073 and change of zone 2016-127. It's substantial conformance determination number two to the Canyon Cove specific plan. The site is located south of Newport Road, north of Holland Road, east of Getz Road and is adjacent to the Audi Murphy Ranch specific plan. Current general plan is specific plan number 282, which is Canyon Cove. To the northeast and west, you can find the Audi Murphy Ranch, specific plan number 209. And to the south is the city of Lake Elsinore with a small pocket of rural residential, five acre minimum to the southeast. The site is currently vacant, surrounded by vacant land with Newport Road to the north and existing homes in Audi Murphy Ranch to the east and homes under construction to the west. This is the Canyon Cove land use map showing planning areas three, four and five. And as you can see, planning areas three and four are residential, excuse me, and open spaces planning area five. Substantial conformance 2016-073 is the determination number two to specific plan 282 and it proposes to modify the front yard setbacks. And it proposes to modify the front yard setbacks of residential planning areas number three and four to 20 feet, to a 20-foot front yard setback for two-story or three-story homes, 15-foot front yard setback for one-story homes. All front-facing garages shall have a minimum 20 feet front yard setback. That will apply to one, two, and three-story homes. And all side-loaded garages shall have a minimum 15-foot front yard setback, which will apply to one, two, or three-story homes. The proposal also includes a reduction in the minimum average width of the lot, of the lots within planning area three from 60 feet to 55 feet. Change of zone number 2016-127 proposes a change to the zoning ordinance of the Canyon Cove specific plan in order to account for the modifications to the front yard setback and the minimum lot width. Track map 32025 was approved for planning areas three and four of the Canyon Cove specific plan by the county in 2006. The master developer is now ready to sell the lots to builders who will process the housing product and build the homes on the lot. The modifications to the front yard setbacks will create more of a variety in the streetscape. It'll bring forth the architecture of the body of the home so that the garages are not the focal point. It will accommodate greater flexibility and placement of the homes and accommodate larger backyards. It will allow for larger one-story homes, which are very popular in the current market. It also reduces the amount of landscaping in the front yard to reduce water usage, which is current, consistent with current mandates. Although three-story homes are mentioned in the modifications, the current proposed product in the development does not include any three-story products. The 15-foot front yard setback will also apply to one-story homes with second-story elements, such as a bonus room or a loft. Here you have an example of a one-story product with a second-story element that's being proposed by one of the developers within the community. As you can see, for all intents and purposes, it looks like a single-story home, although it does have a loft included in the floor plan.
Can we go back to that picture? I didn't understand that when I was looking through the staff report. So basically, it's a high pitched roof and there's, are the windows for the loft on the back of the house or something?
I can show you.
The sides are where the windows are?
The windows are to the side.
To the side?
To the side. I do have a floor plan of this layout if you, if you want to see that one.
Yes, I should have looked more details about it.
We don't have it.
They don't?
No.
Oh.
It's on one of my PowerPoint slides, not in the package.
Let's go forward with the presentation and we'll go back for questions.
Go back. Okay. The proposed revisions to the setbacks will not result in all of the lots within the tract having a setback of less than 20 feet. And the proposed reduction in the front yard setbacks for side-loaded garages are consistent with the countywide design guidelines, which the city adopted. The project is surrounded by properties in the Audi Murphy Ranch specific plan, which includes planning areas where 15 feet is the minimum front yard setback for homes within those planning areas. When the county of Riverside processed the substantial conformance determination number one to Canyon Cove specific plan, the lot sizes were reduced for planning area three to a minimum 5,500 square feet. However, the lot width was not changed to be consistent with that 5,500 square foot requirement. Revising the minimum lot width requirement for planning area three will provide consistency amongst the development standards for the planning area. Per city code, a specific plan substantial conformance determination may consist of a non-substantial modification of a condition of approval, diagram, or text of the specific plan that does not change the basic design or improvements required and is consistent with the original resolution adopting the specific plan, the conditions of approval, and the specific plan text. The proposed modification to the front yard setbacks and the minimum lot widths are not considered substantial modifications to the specific plan text and are considered to be consistent with the basic design of the specific plan. Prior to the meeting, the planning commissioners received handouts where we made minor modifications to the resolutions to account for the minimum lot width modification. The previous resolutions focused a little more on the front yard setback change, so we just made it a little clearer that the minimum lot widths are also included in the modifications. The applicant has also been made aware of this change. With that, staff recommends to conduct, the planning commission, conduct the public hearing, adopt resolution number PC16-267 approving planning application number 2016-073 for substantial conformance determination number two to specific plan number 282 Canyon Cove, approving modified front yard setbacks for planning areas three and four and a modified minimum lot width for planning area three. And to adopt resolution number PC16-268 approving change of zone number 2016-127 to change the zoning ordinance of the specific plan number 282 Canyon Cove. This concludes staff's presentation.
With regard to the modifications made in the resolutions, you said that the applicants are made aware. Did the applicant have any objections to the language that was added?
No.
I would imagine they wouldn't, but.
No. No objections.
Commissioner Thomas, do you want to address your question of staff now?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. One, by reducing the minimum lot width, what's the number of houses they're going to increase by doing that?
It doesn't necessarily increase the number of homes. It's just the buildable portion of the lot is adjusted to accommodate.
It goes by size because the lot square footage doesn't change.
Correct.
It's a shape issue.
Okay. The three-story product, is that in the specific plan or is that something we can deny as a condition to say, no, three stories?
The staff could deny any three-story proposals, but the applicant has made us aware that there won't be any three-story proposals within this development. It's just allow, the language is there because the ordinance allows for it. The staff does not necessarily have to approve a three-story product.
We'll have to talk about that then. I'd like to do that. And then, what is our current development code standard as far as setbacks? Because I know we went through that and I don't have it memorized. As far, remember, we talked about setbacks and all. That was just in the EDC, right? We haven't done the non-EDC development code yet, have we?
No, not just yet.
No. So we're still at county standard? Okay. That's it. That's all the questions I have.
Just piggybacking on that, with regard to the 20 and 15-foot setbacks, do we have, are we going to have to approve these lot by lot, whether each lot should have a 15 or 20, or is there going to be some standard that applies across the design?
So when the applicants or the builders come in and submit for their final site of development, which is reviewed at an administrative level, staff will go through lot by lot and look at the setbacks for each of those lots and make sure, you know, there's some varied setbacks along the street and that it makes sense, basically.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, the way this is going to be laid out is the whole development has a minimum of 15 and then they can vary by 20 if they find it to be aesthetically pleasing?
Correct. And then all garages, of course, shall have a minimum of the 20, 20 feet.
So any front-facing garage has to be 20 feet?
Correct.
And then if they don't have a front-facing garage, it can be 15 feet?
Correct.
Or 20, up to their discretion?
Correct.
I understand. Thank you. See if I have any other notes here. Is there a current standard on maximum height for these products within this plan?
Yeah. So the zoning code will also have a maximum height. Let me grab that for you.
Oh, it's in the quotes here.
Yes.
So even if they want to go three stories, it's still a maxed out at 35 feet?
Correct.
Okay. Any other technical questions of staff at this point?
The setbacks at Audi Murphy Ranch that neighbor it, that's 15 feet, correct? To the garages?
So the Audi Murphy Ranch specific plan, of course, is divided into various planning areas as well. So it may vary per planning area, but there are some that have the minimum 15-foot front yard setback.
So this project's not going to stick out like a sore thumb. It's going to blend in.
Correct.
With Audi Murphy.
So Commissioner Phillips is pointing out, Commissioner Phillips is pointing out to me in the ordinance, it says building height shall not exceed two stories with a maximum height of 35 feet. Is that inconsistent with their right to have three stories? It'd be Exhibit C, section A to A.
Page one.
Okay. So then if the, if the code limits to two stories maximum, then they would not then be allowed the three stories. We would go with that development standard.
Thank you. All right. Well, then at this point, at 7:15 PM, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I'll ask our clerk whether the notice was legally published?
Yes, sir, it was.
And do we have any correspondence?
Yes. In your blue folders, you receive correspondence from Rafael Victorio.
Which is also emailed to us.
Right. Everybody got that in advance and it's also in the folder. Any other correspondence since then?
No, sir.
No? All right. Is the applicant here and would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Joel Morse representing Brookfield Homes. I'm with TMB Plannings, 17542 East 17th Street, Tustin, California. We worked with staff closely to prepare the zoning ordinance and the substantial conformance. We are in agreement with all the conditions and the changes to the resolution. I want to point out a couple of key things that the change in the lot width is a cleanup item that is already approved as part of the approved track map that applies to these two planning areas. So what we're doing is cleaning up the zoning for this at staff's request. The standard setback is 20 feet for garages, as was pointed out earlier. So what we're asking for is that side-on garages are allowed to be 15 feet as well as architecture fold or living spaces, which as staff pointed out in their, in their presentation, improves the overall street scene, pedestrian experience, reduces front yards and so forth. The window location, to answer Commissioner Thomas's question, they are on the side of those units of those lofts, it's on the side of the house, so it's not on the front. And then relative to the 35 feet, if the commission's uncomfortable with the 35 feet in that portion of the ordinance, we're very comfortable striking that from the ordinance here and now. No one's planning on building that. Obviously, the zoning ordinance prior, earlier in zoning ordinance, it minimizes it to two stories anyway. It's sort of superfluous. If you're uncomfortable with it, feel free to strike it. We're happy to accept that as a change in the ordinance right now. And that concludes any, my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
The two-story products that you're dealing with, that you're considering, what's the height on those?
They're going to be 25 feet, probably, maybe 30 feet. Something like? Yeah, 25 or 30 feet.
And I understand that you've represented to staff that there's no three stories being considered right now, but under this ordinance that's before us, you understand that that's not even a possibility?
Yes. That's why we're willing to strike it. We're practical when necessary.
So would it be, I'd rather have a maximum height number in there. Would there be a maximum height that you'd be comfortable with that's lower than 35 feet?
35 feet is a standard, so we'd be comfortable with the, with the regular across-the-board city standard of 35 feet for single-family residences?
Can I bump in, Chair?
Yeah.
So there's no application and this wasn't noticed for a change in the height, so we cannot act on a change in the height today?
I was going to suggest not to do that anyway, so.
But if they want to make a separate application for that, then.
Right. Yeah, I was going to, I was going to leave that for discussion at the end. Anything else from the applicant?
Not at this time.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public testimony on this issue?
Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Furman. About two years ago, I had a near-death experience and I'm kind of getting my health back. About 10 days ago, I got this notification on the change on 282. So since I'm a property, one of the property owners that borders 282 on the south side, I figured I'd better take a hike up there and see what's going on. And I found that on the north side of 282, there was a road access to the parcels on the south. One of the parcels was 358080007.9. Okay? And there's parcels to the left that had road access from Newport Road to get up to their properties that are outside the 282. I see that the road has been removed. A cut and V-ditch has been installed along the south side of 282, which has blocked access to all these parcels and has rendered them unbuildable and useless. I am requesting that access be restored. Now, I think it's a little bit of the planning commission's responsibility when there's encroachment on adjoining parcels on the development and it doesn't get this far. I might have caught it sooner if I was healthier, but I caught it now. If you have any questions, I'm willing to answer or if you want to show them, if you want me to show you on a schematic, I can do that.
I have a question of, well, number one, is there alternate access to it from the south of your property and the north side of the hill?
No, no. There's, there's a mountain running straight down. Access was from Newport Road when the people bought all those parcels that are outside 282.
So I have a question, counsel. Is access for him, is that a requirement from there? Since that's the only access, can you, can this development?
Well, I understand that this may relate to the property at issue, but the question doesn't relate to the substantial conformance determination or the change of zone. So I, I don't really think it's particularly germane to this.
I realize it's not part of the discussion you have right now, but it's, it's an item that I'm bringing before the commission on 282. Okay? I wasn't healthy enough to catch it sooner, but I caught it now. And I just want you to be aware of it.
Well, I would say it is germane to this because if we're going to approve substantial conformance and it's legally not, not supported, then there is no substantial conformance if it's legally, if the specific plan is performing illegally. So what?
The noticed issue that we have today is the lot shape issue. The ingress and egress and roadways are a plot plan issue that we don't have any authority to do anything with today. It would have to be brought as a separate application. He's bringing it to attention, so if this thing goes to final approval or whatever, once they put in the designs.
Right.
That it should be considered, but it's outside of our scope of authority today for what's been noticed for hearing.
I believe the map's already been approved.
And that's something that can be, that's something that has to be dealt with at a separate forum. He's notifying everybody that there's this issue, but as far as our authority to act, we don't have any authority to act on that issue today.
I do understand that, Mr. Carwin. I just was bringing it to the attention now because this is the first chance I've had to speak on this issue on 282.
That would be something perhaps you could discuss with either the developer or make a, make a direct communication to staff on that.
I would love to meet with the developer to see what's going to, what's going to conspire.
I'm going to make that introduction right now. Thank you, Mr. Furman. The applicant may respond.
How are you doing? Nice to see you. Joel Morse, TMB Planning. As, as Mr. Furman pointed out, denying, denying access, legal access to parcels is illegal and not. and not, not permissible under the subdivision map act. We get, we understand that. To our knowledge, that is not the case here. We have been working with this parcel since 1997, was when Canyon Cove was originally approved. I haven't seen a map to tell me exactly which parcels Mr. Furman is referring to, but we'll be happy to sit down with him and, and figure out whether there is or is not an issue, and then if there's an issue, we'll be happy to work with him to try to get that access. If you put up, tomorrow, if you would put up the specific plan map, the overall land use plan again, yeah, so you'll notice that everything south of the, of the road there is open space, so there's no development there anyway, so I'm not really clear where the access issue is based on this map.
Where your dark arrow is on the lower right-hand corner, that square right there.
Well, let me, hold on a second, hold on a second, let me take control of this right now. This is not an issue for tonight's planning commission meeting, so if you gentlemen want to discuss that outside chambers, be my guest, but if we don't have any further issues on the setbacks or the lot shape issues, we can move on. Do we have any other public speakers on this topic?
Yes, sir, Ms. Miller.
We don't need a public hearing, we need a public rebellion against development, against Canyon Cove. We don't care how much time you spend on this. I always turn around when I've gone the wrong way. You must too, for you are going the wrong way to construct more houses in Menifee. There are only, these are only five hundred square yards with the house. We don't care if landscaping is drought tolerant. All grading shall be halted if Indian artifacts are found, solar roofs on every building. Nothing will make up for the loss to the children's environment of a hundred and four acres with three hundred homes on it, a seventeen-acre school squeezed in. Where is the proof of flood control facility bond and certificate of insurance when they will never be able to obtain them because the runoff will fill up Newport Road and Holland Road and every place else around here? If you've seen any draining of rain in the last five years because of overdevelopment, you don't even know which way the water will roll. Firefighters face loss of life with more threatening fires. Massive evacuations have increased from encroaching flames. The Press Enterprise has an article on "Build and Burn." The vegetation continues to overheat for longer periods of time. Let's see, March through October, and fires are fueled with more heat from pollution. We need our natural habitat for animal homes, flood control, fire protection. Homes are fire starters. The planet is too dry to build anything. Responsible wildlife conservation agencies would never permit this because of needed wildlife corridors. Why are there many empty homes in Riverside? Because there is no housing shortage. No one should be moving to California. No one should be moving internally in California. California is overbuilt, and the empty commercial industrial houses are tax write-offs. How trashy is that? These empty buildings gave temporary jobs to rock haulers, planning commissioners, bulldozer operators, drywallers. These jobs have no retirement packages, and these buildings have given insufferable weather change to the permafrost in Alaska, the deteriorating moisture in the rainforest, and the flattening of the land here, plus removal of thermal-producing hot and cold contours of the landscape. You flatten it, then you fill it up with concrete, and all the moisture just evaporates. It never has a chance to fill a cloud. The land never has a chance to absorb the CO2, and when you open it with the bulldozers, the sequestered CO2 rises up and creates more heat. In the event of the earthquake, when, not if...
Ms. Miller, that's your time.
The hydrate, the, the fire hydrates may break, and then you won't, they'll turn the water off, and you won't be able to put the fire out of your houses if you build and trash the earth with.
No further speakers, sir.
Say no.
All right, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:29 PM. So this is the point where discussion among the commission is permitted. So with regard to the setback issues or the lot width issues, any comments or questions from the commission? Having heard none, it's a fairly narrow issue, I think, that, you know, as, as the applicant pointed out and staff both pointed out, it's more of a housekeeping issue than anything else, and it doesn't create an environmental change because the lot size is remaining the same. So we have...
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution PC-16-267.
Second.
Can we clarify, that's with the proposed changes that staff brought forward today?
Can you define those changes specifically?
It's in red.
Oh, on the letter, oh, yes, okay, yeah.
Yeah, the, so the, the resolution has been provided in the blue folder with some language in red.
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
There's three spots on the resolution that are outlined in red in our copies, those are the additional language, and that will be included in what we are approving.
Will you confirm that, Commissioner Doty?
Yes, I'd like to revise my, thing like that, make a motion to adopt Resolution PC-16-267, along with staff's red line recommendations of Resolution PC-16-268 and Resolution Number PC-16-267.
I think we need to do these one at a time.
Yes, sir.
So let's just make a motion on, on one, please.
All right. Those are the same numbers. Okay, I get you.
So let's do 267, and then we take a vote, and then we'll do 268. So you want to withdraw your motion and remake it?
Yeah, withdraw it and revise it to adopt Resolution Number PC-16-267, along with the red line comments of the resolution provided by staff.
Second.
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
And Chair Carwin.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number PC-16-268, along with the red line comments provided by staff.
Second.
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
Chair Carwin.
Yes. All right. That would be the end of our public hearing calendar. Any items of, for discussion tonight? Nothing?
She gave them to me before.
Any comments from the community development director?
Just a short, brief one this evening for the planning commission, the notification that the Dog House Restaurant will be opening soon in the Countryside Marketplace, you may want to go check that out.
Define "soon."
I, I don't have an exact date, probably within the next week or two, to be open to the public, I know they're...
Is it on the same "soon" timeline as Sonic?
No, it is on a faster-track "soon" timeline than Sonic. Next week or two, I know that they're going to be having some kind of limited serving and then open to the publics very soon, next week or two. It is custom hot dogs and hamburgers in, in the Countryside Marketplace, so if you get a chance to stop by when they open, I'm bringing it up now, since we will not have another planning commissioner, planning commission meeting until August.
I haven't been over there recently, but is the Lens Crafters open yet?
It is not, but it'll be right next to it.
Soon?
I don't have a timeline on that. They are working on their tenant improvements and moving right along.
I need new glasses, so I was asking. Thank you very much for those comments. I do really enjoy hearing about all these new businesses that have been approved, starting to actually open and serve the public, so that's very, very exciting. We had that Krikorian report from you last week, also "soon," which is better than coming in the future. All right, any other, any other comments from commissioners? I will just, I just want to reiterate the comments from Mr. Furman, that the staff take into consideration that access when this thing comes up finally for staff review, just to make sure that, you know, that his ingress and egress has been considered to that property, because it's pretty remote up there. Anybody else? All right, so at 7:34, we are in adjournment. Thank you.